I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, roll call Russell please.
Councilmember Schröder?
Here.
Councilmember Breitgrus?
Here.
Councilmember Jablonski?
Here.
Vice Mayor Chris Kelly?
Here.
Mayor, thank you.
Go right ahead.
First of all, welcome, I'd like to welcome all of you to tonight's second public budget hearing. This is really the conclusion of budget process that started this day, really back in February and March. We've been through sending a preliminary rate, the budget workshop back in August, we had our first public hearing a couple of weeks ago, this is the second and final hearing that will establish next year's budget rate and budget. I just want to take a moment and thank the mayor and council for your efforts on working on this. This has obviously been a difficult, challenging year. I wanted to take a moment to thank all of you for your efforts towards that process. I'd like to thank Marty and the finance team as well as the rest of the staff who've done just an outstanding job working on, as I said again, a very challenging year. So before I turn it over to Marty for a PowerPoint that he had for the same thing, Mayor, I have a statement that I need to read to have on record. You'll indulge me.
Go right ahead.
The Civil Florida statute, Chapter 200, point 065, Section 2, paragraph D1. The first item to be discussed tonight is the percentage increase in millage of the rollback rate and why. For fiscal year 2018-19, the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, is considering a revised property levy of 4.8311 mills, which is an 11.62 percent increase over the rollback rate of 4.3283. This increase results primarily from higher contractual costs pertaining to the second full fiscal year of a five-year public safety services contract for both police and fire rescue, as well as funding for new and/or ongoing capital improvement projects from the proposed budget book. Millage funding for the town's roadway, surface, refacing, and drainage projects through the Transportation, Surface, Drainage, Onboarding, Rehabilitation, Capital Improvement Program, also known as TISDOR, decreased $20,000 to $450,000 or .3342 mills. Additionally, this budget provides for the funding of multiple program modifications, including quality of life and service level improvement, public safety, parks, recreation, open spaces, and other transportation capital improvement. The millage for operating purposes without the TISDOR project is 4.4969. After numerous advisory board meetings, council discussions, a budget workshop, and feedback received from the tentative first public hearing, the revised budget totaled $17,778,801. This includes a general fund budget totaling $12,738,712, just over half the budget, provides for police, fire protection, and rescue services. A capital projects funds budget totaling $240,000 to not just maintain facilities but also improve our public safety as well as pros infrastructure. Special revenue funds budget comprising the transportation fund totaling $1,598,564 to maintain as well as improve streets, roadways, and drainage, and the volunteer fire fund totaling $208,338. A debt service fund budget totaling $1,055,972, which provides for one-year principal and interest payments on existing loans, as well as activation of the town's urgently wanted credit due to hurricane. And finally, an enterprise fund comprised of the solid waste, bulk waste, and recycling utilities budget totaling $1,942,225. The billage rate and budget requires two public hearings. The initial hearing was held on Wednesday, September 12, 2018, at 6:00 p.m. The final hearing and adoption is scheduled for tonight. Thank you, Mayor.
Absolutely. Do we want to read the resolution first?
We see the resolution. Thank you, Mayor, may I continue?
Go ahead.
The resolution to the town council of Town Southwest Ranches, Florida, approving and adopting the final millage rate for taxation of real and personal property lying within the boundaries of the town of Southwest Ranches for the 2018-2019 fiscal year commencing October 1, 2018, and ending September 30, 2019, providing for separability and providing for effective.
Okay, I'd like one to approve. Public comment on this matter?
Well, Mayor, it might be helpful to the public not to take too many of ourselves. Let Marty do his presentation.
Marty, go right ahead.
Thank you, Mayor, it was nice, Mayor. Councilmembers, town administrator, Andrew Burke, and the public who are here in present tonight. There is a PowerPoint before we get started. Plenty of copies available for distribution. Please feel free to take one to follow along. Dear the budget book, the proposed budget book, we have a version up here by the town clerks. We have one at our desk if anyone should choose to review it beforehand. And this PowerPoint will be posted to the website first thing tomorrow for all those that are on the video that are being recorded tonight. So we are at the final stage. Tonight's hearing, the second public hearing, is our final millage adoption, our final budget adoption. Town councilmembers and town administrator are listed. Our first slide, our PowerPoint slide, which is page number four comprises our proposed millage rates from the initial, left to right. You will notice our initial proposed back in July through the workshop, we had a reduction from 4.9890 down to 4.9509. And then after our first public hearing, we further had a reduction to 4.8311, which is recommended for approval tonight. In terms of dollar reduction impact from the initial proposed, the first go-round resulted in combination level of service increase as well as a dollar reduction, netting $51,313. After our first public hearing that was held on September 12, 2018, we were able to come up with another $161,000 in reductions, and all these reductions are identified in the agenda. So I won't be going into the specific items tonight, but if you have copies or need copies specifically, it will identify the changes to reflect the total reductions of $212,660. As it relates to TISDOR, our component, that also as shown previously, has a reduction from .3612 down to .3342, the main reason being a $25,000 reduction from the previous year in the funding. Now, in our millage comparison narrative for our next slide, that currently for our fiscal year 2018, the Southwest Ranches operating plus the TISDOR millage totals 4.4629, which is the seventh lowest combined operating and debt millage rate in Broward County excluding unincorporated Broward County. The revised fiscal year 2019 millage rate, including TISDOR, totals 4.8311, which moves the relative position of Southwest Ranches to eighth lowest of 31 municipalities. The relative position of Southwest Ranches among Broward County municipalities still remains approximately within the upper 20 percent target. Twenty-three municipalities, or almost 25 percent, are presently proposing millage rates higher than Southwest Ranches for fiscal year 2019. Going into the individual comparisons and the rates from municipality, you will see our ranking as highlighted, a number eight from the 4.4629, as revised, 4.8311. Going into the second page, you will see that a large majority are in the 6.0 and 7.0 levels. So we're still in the top 25 percent and well under a 5.0 millage rate. Our total direct nonrelapient portion, the important thing I want to go on record is the fact that the tax bill that you all received, the TRIM notice, all that money does not directly come to the town of Southwest Ranches. What this shows you is all the different tax authorities within Broward County, which includes Broward County, the Broward County School Board, our South Florida Water Management, our Navigation District, Children's Services Council, and then the South Broward Hospital District. So you will see that 73 percent goes to all the other sources, and as revised, proposed, only 27 percent of the tax bill actually is remitted and we receive from taxpayers. That's all I have with regards to the final millage adoption, Mayor. I turn it over to you for public comment, questions, and voting. Thank you.
Okay, public comments. Anyone here who speaks, back and forth.
No, Hollisworth, 199th Avenue. At the previous meeting on the subject, I agree not to raise the debt anymore, the millage rate, from what it was last year. Yet, you think that more tense is reasonable. Along with the excessive fees that we're being hit with this year. When you raise fees so high, you shouldn't raise the millage rate. You should live with it. You haven't used a pencil, you haven't used a crayon. You used watercolor and then erased it. Taking out $100,000 out of what our budget was is not cutting the budget. That is just putting some tinsel on it, calling it a pig. If you haven't done your job, it should be the exact same rate of millage this year as last year. Thank you.
Thank you, because I see sixty-four hundred and fifty-two. Just speaking up against this massive tax burden. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Lori Parrish. I live at 1301 Loray Road. I want to thank the mayor and council and the staff for their efforts to cut the budget. Their 20 some odd percent increase is still a big increase. In fact, I don't know what it would mean in my own personal tax bill, but our taxes would up $724. And out of that, 87 percent, 612-plus dollars, went to the town of Southwest Ranches. So while the budget rate might look low, the increase is certainly a greater increase than I'm sure any of you received in your household budgets, as well as all of us. That aside, I do appreciate your efforts, thank you. I had a question, and then I want to add a number of questions. First of all, I know that the last time, I apologize for my voice.
Don't worry.
Last time, when we talked about the coop, the bulk pickup, and someone was going to get on the phone and make sure Waste Pro was much nicer and not sweeping up or putting whatever the things Doug talked about on the forks that take up all the squalls. Well, I don't know if it worked, because the places along the railroad are as bad, if not in many cases worse than they ever were. And today, when I saw them picking up the garbage, they didn't even have a waste pro truck. They had a rental from a premium rental company, the Red Truck on the Red. But one of the things I wondered from Doug talks about, how y'all hoped to cut the impact of bulk pickup rate last year. I noticed that Virg Ron didn't complete the pickup. He missed two bulk pickups in my neighborhood in September that he didn't pick up. And then Waste Pro didn't pick up. Their contract started on October 1, and they didn't pick up in our neighborhood until sometime in January, and I think the only reason was I called Doug, thought he was sick. But since there was over one quarter of the year missing, did the town get a rebate for that amount of money last year? Bulk pickup did not happen in Southwest Ranches from October 1 until it was sometime in January. So Waste Pro missed one full quarter of the year. Did the town get credit?
And then, you know, we'll probably address that later, if not later this year.
Well, it's still.
FEMA was kicking in and they couldn't start, so otherwise FEMA, we wouldn't be getting free.
And then also, Mr. Virg Ron's company, even though he bought the business and had a low rate, his two bulk pickups in September, I wonder if he got a credit back for that. That being said, I noticed him, this is with all apologies to Keith, Keith, I like you, I love your father and your family. However, 795,000 in legal for a government this size is outrageous. In fact, I even took the time to look and see the property arsers office. It's more than, I guess, three times as big, and the budget's a little more than twice as big. And the last year that I was there, full-time general counsel, that I believe her salary was $179,800, plus fringe benefits, 2 percent to state or state. And then an assistant general counsel, they'd have made over $150,000. And a full-time paralegal that made $80,000, the two benefits. The budget for that year was $438,932.55, and that including some outside counsel, including Phil Sherwood, I believe, yeah, I forget anyway. The bottom line, $795,000. And as I appear standard from the town manager, Mr. Polycop charges you on an hourly basis, and that hourly basis is $180 now. However, maybe it's time you thought about when you were spending $795,000 a year, about having a full-time general counsel and paralegal, have you considered that?
We have.
Have you cut to $795,000?
We have, we just.
To how much?
Yeah, we'll deal with it. We'll answer all of it.
What do you like that job?
John Kenny, I live on Southwest 54th Street. I'm not going to reiterate what Lori said, to make any sense, but I do want to talk to you a little bit about the union cost of this place. I'm handicapped, and I was 2460, raising my grand child to learn. My family first started in Cooper City. We've been with this town since the beginning. I've been in my house over 25 years. If you keep this up, you're going to force me out of the house, I hope you're old enough. I am 66 and cannot take this. You need to find ways to backforce. You need to do better. I am not the only woman in this town in this circumstance. I have been here for 25 years. You are not doing good enough, sirs. You must do better for the people in this town. The legal fees are out of hand. She talked about garbage pickup, they come down 172nd, but they have been down 54th for a dump of yard waste and stuff, and over a year. It's ridiculous. You're paying for services you're not getting, and I think you don't negotiate them right either. You must do better for the people in this town. Thank you.
Bob Hartman, 5441 Southwest 198 terrace. I've never met that woman, we haven't spoken. I fly out here every time to protect the people that are on the extended home. I'm worried about it. I said it last night at the Sunshine Ranches meeting. I retire a few more years. I don't want to be forced out by tax increases. There's a whole lot of reasons to move out of Southwest Ranches, but being taxed out just absolutely rubs me the wrong way. You're hearing somebody who's being impacted by our constant continuous increases in taxes. Now, I'm glad that, I did the numbers as I always do, and on average, is it time already? Oh, he's in the men's room. I did the numbers again, and just combining up the number of houses by the reduction in the water fees and what I'm seeing here of the $212,000, you're saving everybody about a hundred bucks, because we know garbage really can't be touched. A hundred bucks really isn't enough when taxes are going up $300, $400, $500. Doesn't offset the garbage base. And I want to make a recommendation, because the last three years, we've had tax increases. And something's changed that I want to bring to your attention. I know, you know, new guy, new process, things change. But when the budgets were discussed by you up here, not one-on-one with the finance director or with Andy, when they were done in the days, there were no sacred cows. The council challenged each other. Why are we so high here? Why aren't we giving up something there? You guys can negotiate. You could work to reduce the budget in front of the people with complete transparency. And I know there's something like that, based on what I've been explaining, that's going on behind the scenes, not amongst yourselves, but with the administration. I would encourage you to bring it back out in the public, because then we see what you stand for. Then we see what you want to spend our money on. Doing it in the background, I don't know who gave up what, and I'd really like to know, because those are the things I tend to talk to get out after the fact. So I saw it came down further, I'm happy, you know, $51,000 to $212,000, that's in the right direction, but it would have been nice if we could have gone right to the tax rate. Thank you.
Tony Brown, 6231, Hank Rockrath. I hate falling down, but nobody at all, I can't argue. I've got to say, at this point, on taxes, and on crowds, I'm tired of them already. So we've got to find, because something, I noticed that the town needs to raise money, pay for services, we've got to find other ways to raise money, to buy those properties, to allow businesses to grow, the house, I know that some others have done it, bringing the money, raising the millage rates on us, constantly raising our taxes, it's just enough to get, to get a divorce, or to get a divorce. I'm just going to take it up, just going to forge it out, and taxes are higher than I'm already. Hopefully, we come up with some other solution to follow, thank you.
Good evening, council, staff. Everybody did their job, you got a budget out, and it's not an easy thing to do, so I give everybody credit. But a few months back, bonuses were given out to the help, by the council. Now, who in their right mind gives out a bonus for performance? If they brought in a budget that was equal or less, they get a bonus. But they got bonuses, we got a huge tax increase. That's number one. Number two, it only takes three of you up here to say no to this. And I'm just talking about the millage, I'm not talking about the contracts, because there's nothing you can do with that.
I live here.
I've wondered it down on most of them, I understand that. With this mill rate stuff, if three of you just vote no, we go back to the drawing board, spend a couple more days, 188th Avenue, we can live with some patches for another year. We don't even have to put it off a year, we can say, let's just do it eight months for a buck, and drag some of that cost into the following year. You know, there's some innovative ways you can flatten this mill rate out. And in light of all these other service increases, I think that it's the least you can do. So I'm asking, three of you, vote this down, spend a couple more days kicking it around, and come back and have some real cuts here. I realize it's not an easy thing to do, but you know, what we're really getting here, we don't have any services in this town. There's no streetlights, sidewalks, there's no sewer, there's no water, you know, but yet we pay.
Fire on?
Thank you. That in mind, and the increases, and the fees, please work on the mill rates more. Vote this down and go back to work on it. Thank you.
Any additional public comment? Senior, additional public comment? Public comment is closed, back to the council. Any comment?
Well, I'd grab my mic and talk into a chisel.
Go ahead and speak.
This was really tough. And I am new at it. I'd like to see everybody get what they want. Can you hear David?
Andrew, thank you, huh?
I want to talk about this rate, which I'm opposed to. I'm going to vote it down tonight, I'm sure, unless somebody comes up with an epiphany. It's not that I don't believe that the health, the finance, and the town administrator didn't do a good job. I believe they did. Just got done telling Marty today, he looks like a whipped weenie, and he needs to take some time off and relax. He's been working very diligently and hard on this. There's a lot of things we could cut. We could keep kicking it down the road, and kicking it down the road, and kicking it down the road. I told, sitting up here, councilmember Breitgrus, I'd like to see more money to put into the TISDOR, and maybe less on some other projects. It is a big one. I'm tired of riding down these bad, horrible roads, and some of them are just horrible. Can we cut our police and fire? I don't believe we can. And there's certain contracts that you get with your garbage and stuff, and you either take the deal they give you, try to negotiate from there, and if you can't, you got to go look for somebody else. And it's very difficult to get where you're going. We have with us tonight two gentlemen that are running for a position. And they were both given budget votes. And at any given time, and I know this to be true, because I went through it, and I did come into town hall prior to the election and discuss the budget. And they were given ample time to come in and discuss it with the town administrator. My question is to them, did you bother to do so, or do you just state whatever should be lowered or changed right here? That's my question to them. As far as the bonus, the first year I got on here, some of these positions, I believe, should have been capped, you know, whatever it is. Should have a cap on it, should not be able to just go, and go, and go, and go. This is your job, this is what you're getting paid for, and we get a paper, and it shows what their accomplishments are. I'm paying you for that. So if you go above and beyond that and do something extraordinary, instead of getting always a salary increase just because of the cost of living, because I'm not getting one, and I know you guys aren't, you give a bonus. A bonus is exactly what it is. It's a bonus, because you've done something extraordinary. So I believe always a bonus is something that is always doable. Maybe a raise isn't. But that's not for us to really get into that. You know, it's asked to us, this is what I want in my budget. We are not micromanagers for the town. We all voted on that years ago. Anybody that lived out here knew where we were going to go at one time. We were going to be something unique. We are unique, we are great. We've had more homes built in this town, more monies have come in. So why don't we have more money? Why not? Because contract stuff has gone up. We came out of a recession. Things started to get good. People were working steady, monies were coming in. It was time, and I agree with all of you, to take a little break, to let it settle. Let us enjoy that we're making some money and doing good. So defer some of these projects. It's not going to stop the town from functioning. It's still going to function, but just defer on for a little bit longer. We cut, or I think they cut, and I don't really want to admit that I kind of lagged on it a little bit, but because of other issues in my life right now, I did. And I maybe didn't bother him as much as I should have. And I did bother him, what about this, or what about that? You know, I tried to question everything. Why can't we? And when I got a good, strong answer back, I had to sit back and say... And when I got a good, strong answer back, I had to sit back and say, you know what? This is right. This is the way it is. The contract stuff, you liked, Bob was saying, you know, you don't have a lot of control with it. It is what it is. But I think overall, everybody up here did their due diligence, they cut as much as they could. I know what my taxes are going up to. I'm not happy, you know? And to try and give everybody everything, it'll never happen.
Do you know what percentage of your ad valorem taxes are property taxes you pay out of that to your attorney?
Yes.
How much is it? It's 12 and a quarter percent. I dare you to find any other government in the state of Florida that does that.
Like I said.
You don't, no, I don't.
I'm, I'm not happy that we didn't cut more. But when there's no more meat on the bone, what do you do? And there's still things in here, I personally, I have no idea what they think, but I personally think it could have been fine. But I'm one vote, remember that list? He's one vote, he's one vote, he's one vote, and he's one vote. That's the way it works.
Steve? Um, I just wanted, first of all, we had some questions that were brought up and said I think now is the appropriate time to respond to the residents for the questions they asked. Can we do that?
Sure. Marty? Do you remember what the questions were asked, we have answered them?
Um, yes, I've taken some notes. Uh, first in regards to legal, yes, that was involved and we instituted a reduction from 795 to 736,500. Uh, the important thing to note is that we, um, are planning on forthcoming, uh, legal, um, pending legal, uh, case with Pembroke Pines for next year, that hearing, I'll defer to Keith in that regard. However, it is a little higher to accommodate, uh, the special extraordinary legal expense that we will be incurring next year. In regards to the, uh, something in regards to the solid waste, uh, about a potential credit, uh, we were heavily involved with Hurricane Irma, Irma, for the first quarter. However, uh, I am aware and I'll defer to Town Administrator, Amy Burns, that at the time, uh, the, uh, when we went to full scale operation, we permitted and allowed, uh, all the parcel owners to exceed the bulk pickup of 12 cubic yards. So, uh, some of it were getting reimbursed from FEMA. However, uh, there was a substantial carryover from the first quarter that we instructed the parcel owners to set aside and hold, uh, this was non-Irma debris, that was later picked up. So that's an important point to note. Uh, the, um, the other comments that were addressed specifically related to the rate, uh, we gave the comparison of 4.4629 versus, uh, the current reduced proposed and, uh, the, the bottom line is, these are all primarily contractual increases that we are facing. Everything unfortunately has a price increase, cost of living, um, this, these are our basic core services that are requiring, uh, the military to increase. Unfortunately, uh, our growth in the town does not meet our cost of living and our operating needs presently. So, um, every year it's on a case-by-case basis, an assessed basis. The important thing, we all have to realize that those homestead, protected by homestead, are, are only facing a 2.4% assessed value increase. So the, the numbers that we brought it down to, which in effect, uh, results in an impact of $126 per 250,000 value is on an average basis. It may not impact everyone. It depends on your individual exemption. Uh, that's all I have. If you'd like me to ask any other questions.
Great. Thank you. Thank you.
Steve, if you want me to add anything to the line?
I was going to make a couple of comments. If I, uh, if I missed something, feel free to jump in. Um, so as we've been talking about, um, one of the major areas that was brought up, TIS bill, and, um, Lori, I appreciate you, I appreciate you being here and bringing up specific things that we can look at and, and make adjustments to.
And it is, Andy's for over an hour. I would like to plug you in, Keith, though.
That's great. What, you know, I'm, I'm a resident here too. I, I don't, I don't, I, I don't like my taxes going up any more than you all like your taxes going up. I wish, I wish there was something where I could, you know, be the hero and pull something out and, and it would be fine. But, you know, after all the reasons that have been spoken about up here. But I appreciate that you, that you, you came with specific things for us to look at. That's helpful. You know, just saying that is, is, is not. So in looking at, at legal, um, it was adjusted, but basically it was 795, I'm going to round it out to 800,000 dollars, um, as the number. It's important to note that 185 of that is for our normal legal services. There's another 100,000 for code compliance issues, which is a significant thing that is ongoing and happens all the time. And then another 10,000 for planning zoning, which doesn't actually go to our town attorney, it goes to another outside service, mill, planning. The other balance of that is half a million dollars, which is specifically set aside for lawsuits. Specifically, one very large litigation that is on the horizon and, uh, which everybody is aware of with Pembroke Pines. If that were to be resolved tomorrow, and Keith, jump in if I go astray, if that were to somehow miraculously be resolved tomorrow, that $500,000 would never be spent. It would be a, um, an excess that would then go to lower our taxes in the future. But it is not prudent for us, knowing that that cloud is on the horizon, it's simply not prudent of us to not set aside money to defend ourselves and work through that process. Hopefully, there's a way out of it and we won't have to spend that money. But we can't, we can't assume that and we can't just pretend like it's not there. We have to do the custodial, you know, duty of setting aside the money so that if it is required, it will be used. You know, I, I just, I just want to say, so that's, that's my, you know, input from a legal standpoint. I don't, I don't like that amount any more than anybody else does. But I think that, um, to go outside council, um, you, you mentioned the rate, $180 an hour. I challenge anybody to, is it 175? Thank you, 175 an hour. Um, I challenge anybody to find the caliber of representation that we are getting today for that rate.
Hire somebody, fake that person unemployed.
And even then, well, I'm, I'm not going to debate back and forth. I think there's other, there are a lot of other expenses there as well, benefits and whatever. So, um, I, I, I think it would be very difficult to, to do that and frankly, I think, uh, we are very fortunate to have the council we have. I've obviously had a lot of conversations with a lot of residents over the last, uh, the last several months, but especially the last few weeks. Um, and, uh, you know, there's a few things that, that have come up, um, didn't necessarily come up in public comment tonight, but, um, they have come up over and over in other conversations that I've had with residents, so I'm going to touch on them as well. Um, one is the volunteer fire department. Aren't we throwing away money on the volunteer fire department? Reality is, is we have full service over on the east side of town. We have, uh, two full teams and we have two, um, have an engine and a rescue. They, they go in two different directions if they have to. On the west side of town, we have adaptive response, which means we basically have one team with two units. They've got to pick and choose, which when they do, when one goes out without the volunteers, uh, there's no coverage. When they go out of service for whatever reason, whether they're transporting or for whatever reason, um, there's no coverage out there. Plus, we have the longest response times out there just because of where this, the current, locate, the current locations of Davey and the volunteers are today. So, um, our other option is to increase service with Davey. That's certainly something I'm sure they would be willing to do for us, but, um, last time we looked into that, the cost would be about 1.2 million. Um, as you can tell by looking at the, uh, the budget, the volunteers are about $370,000. So I think we have made a very wise and prudent decision in working with volunteers and, um, I personally appreciate their efforts and, um, and all the work they do for our town to keep us safe and, um, to keep our residents safe. Aside from that, I'll just say, I'll just wrap it up and say that, um, I've been on the council for 12 years. This has been the most difficult budget process I've personally ever worked through because they're just, we're, we're running out of options. Last year, we cut a lot of projects, um, and did not raise the military rate last year. Those projects did not go up. If anything, they got bigger, they got more expensive because we didn't handle them when they were smaller and, um, easier to handle. So, um, so we're at a point where we're, we're between a rock and a hard place and I, you know, I, I have, um, I appreciate, um, those that have come up and expressed the difficulties. I, from my heart, I wish there was something I could do to change the budget, change the revenues, change the expenses, um, but it's just, it's just, it's just not fair that I've been able to, um, find. And, um, so, um, we've done our best to try and minimize it and, um, we hope that in the future, um, we'll be able to do better.
Yeah, go ahead. Thank you, everybody for coming. Paul George, I'm not having a mic, hopefully everybody can hear me. I always like following Steve, he pretty well nails it, and I just get to add on my own little comments here and there. In our town, we're a contract town and we have, uh, two areas that generate revenue for us, although it's not apparent, it's not apparent. It doesn't come, come right out, but it does. One is our code enforcement, which is basically, they bring in what they cost us and we're expanding that department to better serve the town this year, and that's in this budget. Uh, and the other part that, uh, nobody ever sees, although we lay claim to it every now and then, is our legal department. Uh, they take care of our lobbying efforts and a lot of our stuff with our code issues. But one thing that we basically don't see is, right now, we're working on a, uh, project that goes across the town on greenage pockets that, uh, we got in the station for $340,000. That gentleman over here and his team are instrumental in getting that for us. We have half a million dollars, 500,000, that's five with a five zero sign, uh, coming to us from last year, we were the only municipality granted that in the entire state of Florida. That came from this gentleman's team. So it's not so apparent what's going on with our lobbying efforts, with our code compliance, with our, uh, other legal issues that we have. Yes, we have put money aside for our lawsuits and we have ongoing Pembroke Pines. Uh, that is proof. That is what we're supposed to be doing up here. We're supposed to be making hard decisions and we're making them. We don't necessarily, we're not going to win any popularity contests, I guarantee you that. We all face accidents up here just like everybody else. But there are so many different, every function in this town has a legal component to it. I don't think everybody realizes that. And, uh, Keith and his, uh, team of attorneys are, were constantly on them, uh, several times a day, uh, from all the various departments, and I just want to mention that too. So he does, he does a very good job representing us and I, I appreciate that. And, uh, the grant monies that we get in and the relationships we have in Tallahassee, in addition to the mayor and the council members going up there repeatedly and Keith setting up the, uh, meetings with various senators and House of Representatives, uh, is extremely helpful. So I just want to make sure that everybody understands that. The budget, it's, it's been a tough year. There's no evidence of what's about it. The low hanging fruit has been removed, uh, over the last couple of years. We've had numerous, uh, since I've been in office in 010, we've had a surplus every year. We have a surplus this year too, although it is fractional compared to what it was eight to 10 years ago. Fractional. We, we used to have hundreds of thousands of dollars. Now it's tens of thousands of dollars and, and below that. And so we have a, uh, we have a tight-fisted management system that's going on and, and every dollar is being spent wisely, I feel, up here, because I'm, I'm pretty much your steward of your tax money. And I, I feel that we are spending it for revenue. Not everybody has to agree with it, obviously we have some people out here who question the volunteer fire department, things of that nature, but, um...
We don't have to do it back and forth with the public.
I want to ask him a question about something that he said to understand it. You said every aspect of this town has a legal component. Am I wrong in that?
No, that's true.
Okay. Then why don't we, like other towns, have a town lawyer of our own and save the handguns for when we need them, instead of paying the, the, the $180 an hour? Wouldn't that make more sense? That's my question. If every aspect is legal, why don't we have the town attorney? On, on, on staff?
Uh, thanks.
Okay. To answer your question, we're a contract town. We've been a contract town since inception. We did not decide to have, um, an on-staffed attorney. Mr. Paulie Kopp's firm represents us in many different areas. I don't know how to be more specific than that.
How would you change it? So you could be able to, how would you have to do?
We're not going to get into a whole discussion of how to change it down the middle of that. Uh, it's, you know, you're opening up, uh, you're opening up something that's not...
A can of worms that maybe should have been open soda.
I just want to make mention that a lot of the stuff that we're doing is, is not as transparent as we would like because we don't hang a sign on saying, the legal department did this. We don't do that. So I just want to make mention. And I'm sure, uh, Keith, if you want to put that on the straight here, if you want to add anything to that.
Uh, I mean, uh, as far as legal's concerned, you know, um, the irony is, I remember two years ago when Mike Hamley said, we're paying our lawyer too much money. And I said, Mike, if I get 1.5 million from the Florida Legislature for you this year, will you not say anything for the next three years? And he said, yes. So at the end of the year, I said, here's your 1.5 million, and they came with the check. And that's why Mike's not here right now saying, again, that legal is too much money. Uh, Pembroke Pines pays their attorney a flat rate of 895,000 a year plus $285 an hour for litigation. Lauderdale Lakes just hired a new law firm after doing an RFP for council and they pay over $385 an hour for their new council. Based upon the jump from Jim Brady, who had been their counsel for 40 years at 175, I think it was 185 an hour to today, they had to add 200,000 additional to their budget just to cover their cost of legal that has gone up. Municipal legal is not just the day-to-day sitting on the day, it's, it's constant issues, whether it's potholes, whether it's sidewalks, whether it's, you know, simple, uh, contracts, code enforcement, and lobbying. Uh, a major thing that occurred last year, and I turned to Gary and I laughed, is, you know, if Pines had gotten their way during the legislative session last year, you'd be worrying about Pines' taxes right now and not Southwest Ranches. But because of our efforts in defeating their attempts to de-annex a major portion of the town, we're here today to even talk about this. So, you know, the council has made a decision, uh, that the case... So, you know, the council has made a decision that the case that we have against Pines, which is valued well in excess of $40 million, is worth the investment to the taxpayer. If that wasn't on the legal books, you're talking 200-something thousand dollars for code enforcement and for legal work, because within legal includes lobbyists at county level, code enforcement, general litigation, and general legislative items. So, it's not just, you know, straight legal, it's a comprehensive budget item. So, as a result, it's a pleasure being here, and I think before someone were to challenge it, they ought to look at the neighboring cities and see what they get, and be saying when out of what.
If you'd like to jump in a minute, didn't Coker City just vote on health benefits for their council?
Yes.
And, and what is that, what is that gonna cost us?
You can say that.
Huge, huge. We don't have anything like that.
She didn't run. That wasn't what she signed up for.
That's right. That's right. I didn't, I didn't want to vote.
You didn't?
No, she didn't. The past one, anyway. They voted against.
Have you got anything? If the, the, like, it's just straight.
Just a little bit, you know, every citizen of the town. I don't know how many. We do, if we don't want to. I'm satisfied. It's kind of selfish, because I'm very forced to. Money-wise, I don't know. The charging people in this town would not say a word.
I guess I'll run.
And that's true, they do. Stuff like that. We're, we're supporting a lot of things for other people who are unsatisfied to do this. So, whatever we have to do to make it cheaper, to be able to live on our town, we want. We want to have a town like West, I got a question. Let's face it, what is, money-wise, who people have in their bank account compared to money-wise people in our house has in their bank account? And what are you gonna take in effect of you up here trying to make decisions? You're not making decisions for people to double out of money, you're making decisions for people that are hurt, made in ways connected.
Yep. All right. You all heard from everybody, know us what our taxes raise. It affects all of us, everybody up here, all of you out there. We ride a pretty tight ship up here. We kick the can down the road when we can on these drayage projects if they're $340,000 they have a match. If the match doesn't have to be paid for two years, we kick that can down the road for the two years. Save for a $500,000 grant if the match doesn't have to be met for a couple of years. We kick that can down the road to what has to be met. So, I mean, we could match at the same time and just put aside to have it sitting there waiting, but why do that? So, we're extremely frugal with your money. It's our money also. So, I gotta tell you, it's, it's not fun when you've gotta raise taxes. It's absolutely not fun. But I will tell you on the bright side, on the other side of things, that we're working on some other things, not only the litigation stuff, but other items that we hope to bring some additional revenue to the town. But without bringing additional revenue to the town, it's difficult to keep your taxes down. But I will tell you, in the past, we have raised taxes and we have also lowered them. We've also kept them a level for five years and didn't raise them at all. So, I want you all to think about that because it's, it's not that we just, they just don't go up, go up, go up. I mean, we brought them down and we kept them level. You know, we do what we have to do. As far as legal litigation, I gotta tell you, we have, we get more bang for the buck out of Keith Polykoff than I care to tell you. He covers all aspects of what we need in every department and avenue that we needed in here. We don't have to go reach out and get other people to handle other things for us and stuff. It's, you know, it's a one-stop shop and he does it all and he does a stupendous job at it. So, I gotta tell you, bang for the buck, we're getting a lot of bang for the buck. You all don't see it, feel it, and you see it on that, when the litigation's over, you know, you'll, you'll realize that the legal fees will get back down to where they need to be. But in the meantime, we have to be responsible stewards of your money and be prudent in our setting up for legal. If we don't need it, great, you know, we're good. We have it in reserve next year. But if we need it, it's there, we planned for it, we budgeted for it. So, I apologize to you in advance, but my goal is to, if we raise your taxes, we need to, but I promise you, when we have the revenue and the income coming in, I'll lower them too. I don't have an issue with stepping up here and telling you that, you know, we got more revenue coming in and there's no reason not to reduce the military. So, we've done it before. But anyway, that's, that's all I got to tell you. Anybody else have anything else to add? Call the question, please.
Councilmember Schroeder?
No.
Councilmember Frank Cruz?
Yes.
Councilmember Jomonski?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
Mayor McKay?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay.
Read the next one.
Russell, read it. Thanks, what's the record, read?
The next one is.
Nobody. We're all reaching for it.
This is a habit, creature of habit.
Just speak a little louder.
This is the second meeting of the budget ordinance. This is an ordinance of the town of Southwest Branches, Florida, approving the budget of the town of Southwest Branches fiscal year 2018 through 2019, commencing October 1st, 2018, and ending September 30th, 2019, providing for a budget basis, providing for expenditure funds, providing for carryover funds, providing for notice, providing severability, providing for conflict, and providing for an effective aid.
Motion to approve. Public comment on this matter? Oh, you're gonna do another PowerPoint, go ahead.
Quick PowerPoint, thank you. We're moving to the second stage, our final public hearing. Again, those new people who have arrived, we have handouts. We're welcome to get a copy. They're either on the back table, there's some on the front podium. We have someone at the table here also. We're moving towards the final budget public hearing. Moving into our detailed slides is our total general fund revenue and expenditures. And you will see, with our revised reduction, our ad-halor taxes is slightly over 50% of our total general fund budget of $12,738,000. Our second largest revenue component is our special assessment revenue, that is our fire component. And our third is our state revenue sharing, which comprises our franchise utility taxes. Where our funds go to, again, we are presenting a balanced budget in accordance with Florida statute, $12,738,000, $712,000. And you will see that significant majority is public safety. Now, that is our police, fire, and volunteer fire components. And when you compare, if you go back and forth, please, Rich, you will see the public safety components by itself exceed the total revenues we ultimately expect to receive from just our general ad-halor. Our next component is our general government that comprises our clerk, your finance, legal, your legislator. The general government transfers component, that is our capital projects and debt service areas. The last three are very small, that are attributable to parks and rec, community services, and our physical and environmental areas. Within our general budget, the assumptions we use consistently with prior years, it's a summary document, that is, for new arrivals, this is the book. This is available on our website for anyone to look at. We will have the adopted after tonight's hearing, as soon as we can get the adopted on the website. But you will be able to see all the past year's budgets, PowerPoints on our website if you decide to go back. Our objective is keeping our rates as low as possible while meeting our costs. No additional borrowing. We are utilizing conservative projections of our revenues and expenses, and our goal is to maintain service levels when possible, while also addressing our council policies as well as priorities. Our program modifications is detailed. We have eight proposed funded. These are similar to the ones that we provided in previous cases. Some of them have a reduction in amounts. And in red, you will see that most of them have no millage impact at all. Some do have fire, very few. I'm gonna read them for the record. The information technology replacement program, $13,000. Our GIS technician services. Code enforcement division, level of service increase that was discussed tonight, that came about after our first public hearing on September 12th. The volunteer fire department safety equipment, our fire apparatus replacement program, $25,000. Communication equipment replacement upgrade, this is badly needed upgrades pursuant to Broward County that's forthcoming over the next fiscal year throughout all municipalities. SCBA, bottle replacement, health life, safety matter, and bunker gear replacement program. Moving to the next slide. And then finally, we have a level of service increase, going from two to three staff personnel for our volunteer fire department increase for next year. Seven capital improver projects, moving to the next slide, that are proposed funded. We did have eight, we cut one back. Our fire wells replacement and installation, the town is primarily comprised of fire wells. The impact of there is no millage impact, as highlighted in red. That is directly attributable to our fire assessment. The fire rescue modular complex improvements, this was mandated pursuant to our new public safety contract with Davie, which is also utilized by our volunteer fire department. They're sharing one big quad, which is a beautiful place. I encourage you all to go and visit the new modular complex. The fire station alerting systems, this is a Broward County component, no millage impact, but does have the fire assessment impact. We're making progress on our frontier trails conservation area. We are proposing town hall complex safety drainage and mitigation improvements, again, no millage impact. Then finally, our transportation projects. I think we're in our seventh year of our Tiz Door project, that's our painting, our street painting. And then finally, our drainage improvements, that has all been prioritized by our drainage advisory boards. Then finally, I'm just covering our budget process, calendar events, the, going back from July, from the initial assessment. We had our workshop in August. We have workshops annually to discuss the preliminary rates. September 12th, we had our hearings and our final fire and some ways assessment adoption. We get our advertisement with the Sun Sentinel this past Sunday. And tonight, we've completed the full Florida statute process with our second public hearing and final knowledge of budget adoption. Now, I'm completed. Turn it back to the mayor for comments, questions, and voting for the town council.
All right, thank you. Any public comment on this matter? Seen the public comment, public comment is closed. Back to us, any comments from any of us? We're all good? Call the question.
Councilmember Schroeder?
No.
Councilmember Frank Cruz?
Yes.
Councilmember Jomonski?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
Mayor McKay?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Yep. Adjourned. Take a five-minute break, we start the calendar meeting. Maybe you need to use the rest of the water.